And this little red light comes on, and then Kristy will see on her screen that you want to talk. And then when you're done talking, just remember.
A friendly amendment.
Yeah, okay.
Welcome to the Board of Education's April 6, 2022 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Henderson.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Please turn and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to take a moment to welcome Ann Miller Stott and a group of pre-K through 3rd grade interns from UT who are joining us this evening. Ann is the Coordinator for a pre-K to 3 teacher licensure at UT Knoxville. And thank you for being here tonight. We hope you come back and work for us. As Superintendent Thomas reported on Monday, Knox County Schools will be closed on Friday, April 15, and Monday, April 18. The Board will hold a called meeting on Wednesday, April 27 for consideration of the fiscal year 2023 budget. Details about a meeting location will be shared as soon as possible. Also, Board members, we have until June 30 to complete our annual training, so please let Terry know if you need to register for a training event. Board members, you received information today via email about the addition of Item 6D6 to the consent agenda, which is a rental agreement for Bearden High School. If you have any questions, thus can be entertained as the agenda items are read. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? So, a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Mr. Watson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Thomas, I think we have a special recognition tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as you all know, this is one of my favorite items on the agenda each time we meet, and I appreciate the chance to recognize one of our outstanding administrators this evening. Rob Spees, and Rob's with us tonight, is the Principal of Hardin Valley Academy. He was recently selected by the Tennessee Association of Secondary School Principals as the 2022 East Tennessee Principal of the Year. Dr. Spees is a former Assistant Principal at Austin East, Fulton, and Ellen in STEM, and is also the former Principal of Fulton High School. He was named Principal of HVA in 2019 and has done an outstanding job leading the HOG family. In fact, you may remember that in December, Dr. Spees and several members of the HVA community appeared before us to receive recognition as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School, which is a terrific honor in itself. Dr. Spees is a strong and creative leader, and this recognition is well-deserved, so please join me in recognizing Dr. Rob Spees.
And Ms. Cote, do you want to start our regular agenda items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6, Consent Agenda.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Satterfield, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7A, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-110, Method of Election of Officers, as amended.
A motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any discussion, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. It's reflective of the paper that you have at your tables. This is very similar to the wording that I shared with the Board on Monday night. Mr. Dupler has kindly reviewed it and made some slight changes, but this would be suggested wording for line 6 on page 1 after the sentence adding or ending with the word "board." It states, "Prior to the annual meeting in September to elect officers, board members will be asked to state their interest to serve as the Chair and/or Vice Chair for the upcoming year at the August work session. Board members who do not express their interest at the August work session will remain eligible for nomination and consideration by the Board at the annual meeting in September." And again, the only intent of this policy change is so that way the Board as a whole can understand where the interests lies to serve in those positions and have some time to consider that as we look to vote at our September meeting instead of all that occurring at the same meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Bab.
Yes, and I did watch the meeting even though I wasn't here on Monday, so I was aware of him introducing this. My only thought is, if you're going to do this, I would also, and this won't affect me, but I would say also if people want to nominate people, this would be the time to do it, and then it gives everybody a month to either see who has an interest, because otherwise it seems very awkward that the self-nominations happen at one, and then you would nominate people, like if I wanted to nominate you, I would wait till the next meeting to do so. So it seems like I can see doing it a month ahead of time to kind of give everybody time to think about it and stuff like that, but I think if you did one for self-nominations and the other one the other way, I think that could be awkward, would be my only thought.
Yeah, I like your idea, and I think, I was actually thinking through that today, how to get that, and I think it might be better to shift to say, "Board members will be asked to state their interest and/or make nominations for those to serve," something like that, but I agree to do it all at one time.
Ms. Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would object to having nominations in August because there will be several years where board members won't be seated at that time.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with Ms. Owen, I mean, I think half the time, board members, you know, every other year, we're going to have that issue, right? Am I right in saying that, every other year? So, I think that what I would prefer is to do, you know, ask if board members, if you want to be made aware of which board members would and wouldn't want to be considered or willing to serve, perhaps in, you know, prior to our meeting, maybe the week prior to our meeting, it'd be sent to Ms. Cote, and she could route it through the Law Department and be sent to the Board. I don't know if we can do that or not, that would be a question for you, Gary, but I don't really like the idea of discussing it in August when we would then be, every other year, have a board change, because you have a new Board. When you have one new Board member, you have a new Board, so that would occur every other year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Horn. So, the best way to do it would be to have, you know, a publicly noticed meeting, and then whoever wants to express interest, say it at that time. So, from that aspect, Mr. Watson's policy change is the proper one to make, if this Board wants to make it. I mean, this Board can keep the policy as is or accept this policy change. Now, as far as nominations and seconds, then I would just caution the Board that you could get into trouble there, you know, by trying to make that ahead of time, basically, instead of at the September meeting, when at that point, I mean, who knows? As you say, there could be new members coming on the Board that you may want to nominate, but you've already nominated, you know, a current member, so that could be confusing. But certainly, just expressing interest, no problem with that if that's the way this Board wants to go.
Ms. Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, should we also add clarifying language that new members would still be eligible if they were not in that August meeting?
Yes, Ms. Owen, I mean, that's, for the will of the Board, I mean, yes, if that's what the Board wants to do, that's not a problem at all. And again, like we talked about Monday, I keep wanting to say last week, but Monday, you know, new Board members, I mean, new Board members that have not been sworn in can certainly reach out on their own.
Ms. Bab.
Yes, and I also see an awkwardness with the August, because I do, and I guess, can I just ask Mr. Owen, I mean, Mr. Watson, a question? Is the purpose of you doing it having time to think about it? Because I guess I'm not really understanding, I think the August, to me, is awkward because, as we're saying, every other year, you have a whole set of people, like I'll be here in August, but won't, you know, I won't be part of the September meeting, and there'll be a whole new set of people. And then I do think the different, and the only reason I brought it up is because I think it's kind of awkward to bring up people self-nominating and then other people nominating at two different times. But the other thing I can't remember is, how do we do it with a special-called meeting? Is it when we do a work session, or is it before the voting? Do we just have a special-called meeting before our regular work meeting? Because my thought almost would be, in September, at the work session, do this. Have the nominations at the work session and have a discussion of people, but a vote not to take place until a couple of days later, if the purpose is just to give a little time and notice on it. And I know that's only a couple of days, but I think that way you actually have your new Board. And I think even when we say, "Oh, these people that have been elected and hadn't been sworn in, they can nominate themselves," well, I think that would be so awkward to nominate yourself before you truly are in office, you know? So I think, that's probably, I guess that's what a little bit is, I kind of want to know sort of your thought behind why you're wanting to do this.
Sure, yeah, and I also think that we have some limitations in terms of possibilities. I mean, the original idea that I brought to the Board at our March 23 meeting was the idea, just like Ms. Horn suggested, is that we send names to Terry, and through the Law Department, she'd get them to us. And then, after speaking with Mr. Dupler, learned that that was not really the possibility. So, my only intent is for us to know prior to being asked to vote, who has interest in that, so we can have thoughtful consideration as individual Board members. That's the only intent, because I do think it's, I don't know of any other institutions that would come together and within 30 minutes nominate, and not having been able to have any prior conversation beforehand as individual Board members, nominate and make a recommendation and vote on the next leaders for that year. I mean, Mr. McMillan even referenced at our meeting this past September, he even said something like, "There seems like something else is happening here," right? And I want to try to avoid that, I want to try to avoid situations where it doesn't look clean or above-board. And so I think people making their interest known ahead of time allows all of us in good faith to consider those interests and ask ourselves, you know, "What do I think about so-and-so being in this role?" Before we're asked to vote on it. So that's the only, that's my only interest in it. I think the work session two days prior, I actually hate our Monday-Wednesdays, I much prefer the Wednesday-Wednesdays that we had, but that's a whole nother point. But I think even the Monday prior gives you at least a couple of days to do that. And, I mean, that's why also in this, I put that if somebody doesn't make their interest in that meeting known, that it's, I'm not seeing it as a formal nomination, it's not that they can't be considered, it's just, at that point, those are the people who said they'd like to be considered for whatever reason. So, that's the intent.
Okay.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't like the August deal at all. I personally think that we're trying to fix something that, I don't see anything wrong with the way it was done prior to this, and this is no, no, you referenced what I said, Mr. Watson. It seemed to me to come together really quick at the last one, and it's no reflection on the present chair. It just came together, and I have no doubt that there were some phone calls made, talking and whatnot behind the scenes, and that's just part of it. That's part of the politics of it, and there are politics involved. I know we'd all like to be holier-than-thou and remove all aspects of politics since it's the school and school board, but you just can't do that. And sometimes it's as simple as somebody finding out who has the votes, or, you know, can I live with that person, or do I want somebody else? But I do think you need a little bit of time if you're going to do that. Now, you know, if you want to bring it up and kick it around on Monday prior to the Wednesday meeting, I would think that's the best suggestion that I have heard, if you've got to do something with it. I see nothing wrong with leaving it like it is, as I said. That's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Bab.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having been through seven of these, and they can be somewhat awkward, but the biggest difference I see is, especially in light of the Sunshine Law, if it is effective or not effective, is that the way it currently is, someone has to nominate you. The other way, you self-nominate, and I don't know which serves this Board better, but there is a big dis- there is a big distinction between saying, please, please, I want to be chair, and somebody else saying the qualities in you that feel like you would make a good chair and nominating you. And then that person always has the ability, and it has been done, to say, no, thank you, I don't want to be considered for this nomination. But I think that's something that we're overlooking, is the fact that self-nominating, and that's really what it's coming down to, or being nominated by one of your peers because of the qualities they see in you. So, anyway, thanks.
Ms. Bab.
Yeah, I, I get the, the idea of like thinking about it, and I think it maybe would avoid some of the issues that Mr. McMillan was talking about earlier, one of our things of Monday, it's just, it's out there and then it gives people a couple of days. But I do think, I don't like the August because it is just a completely different board that's sitting here doing it. So I could support it if it was done on Monday, kind of either whether it's other people nominating you or self-nominating, and then we vote on the Wednesday. But I do think the August is kind of too muddied with two different sets of boards on every other year.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm fine with shifting the wording to the work session prior to the meeting on Monday. And my intent is, I think maybe we're messing with semantics a little bit. My intent is not that people formally nominate themselves to the exclusion of people nominating them. It's more stating ahead of time that I have interest to serve in this capacity, that I'm available and, and all that. And then if people want to nominate that person or another person at the meeting on Wednesday, all that would be fair game. That, I don't see this eliminating the possibility of a board member nominating somebody who didn't even express interest at, at the meeting beforehand. Well, thank you.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree that, I think that, that could work, Ms. Bab, Monday, discuss it and then vote on Wednesday. And I, but I honestly, I think that it would serve us better to have this policy kind of rewritten because you'd basically have to rewrite the first part of it. I think we need to have it rewritten and bring it back next month, and that would still give us plenty of time to get it done before September. So, so I would be in favor of that.
Ms. Henderson.
I agree with Ms. Bab's suggestion. I think that, you know, it makes sense because then you have your new board in place. But then you still, the intent of Mr. Watson is still there of, you know, people have time to know who, who wants to be nominated. So I like that suggestion, Ms. Bab.
I like Susan's suggestion.
I agree.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a thought along those lines, maybe it would be better if on Monday, if we just call the roll and when your name's called, either you have interest or possible interest or you have no interest at all. And I don't think that would take very long. And then that would, that would give people, you know, 48 hours to think about it, to build their support or, you know, whatever. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Mr. Dupler. If we had a special called meeting to nominate before the work session, we would also need a special called meeting before the regular session to actually vote?
No, because, because the regular meeting is a voting meeting, so you'd be able to vote at that time.
So we can nominate at the work session?
Yes.
If that's not considered a...
Well, no, 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 you're not nominating. As I understand it, you're just expressing interest. The nomination, the second, the voting would all occur at the voting meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Owen and a second by Ms. Satterfield, and Ms. Horn, it sounded like you had, and, Mr. Watson, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just add a clarifying question for Ms. Owen. It, when you, the way you asked that, it made me think that maybe you were suggesting that we move the special called meeting to prior to the work session to make nominations and all that, and then just take the vote two days later. Is that what you were suggesting is a possibility?
I wasn't suggesting that, that's what I understood someone to have said.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
Madam Chair, would you state the motion again?
Well, we have a motion to approve the item by Ms. Owen and a second by Ms. Satterfield. I know there was another suggestion made by, I didn't know, were you making a substitute motion or?
So, I'm not sure how you would do that, Parliament, in substitute motion. Well, I would make a substitute motion to let the, let the Law Department work on rewording the beginning of this policy so that it reflects that this would basically become a, another regular agenda item for our regular session meeting in September. And we would therefore vote on it, we would discuss it, as you said, without nominations at the work session, and then vote during our meeting on our regular meeting in September. So, so if that's a substitute motion, that would be my substitute motion.
Second.
So, question, I'm sorry. So we're not going to do the, the deal of Monday night versus Wednesday night?
Well, it would go back to policy review since we have a little bit of time between now and, was that what you wanted to do or did you want to?
I, I did not, I wasn't suggesting policy review because of the timeline. I would prefer that the Law Department, I think, I think Mr. Dupler has a good understanding, so bring it back to the May agenda.
Okay, so...
So that we could vote on it on first reading in May and second in June and be finished with it in the summer.
I just have a point of order. I made a, I don't really care how we handle this, I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. I made a friendly amendment and I don't, is Ms. Owen supposed, since she made the motion, supposed to do something with that first before we have a substitute? Just want to make sure.
Do we have a second to this?
I really don't care.
The substitute would, would override the original motion, but, but, I mean, Ms. Horn, I think you're, you're asking in your substitute to take into consideration the language that, that Mr. Watson's brought forward as well, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting we use this language. Is that what you said?
No, I mean, I mean, but, but to consider that language and rewording the pol, the first part of the policy, is that correct?
It might be easier to just withdraw the motion.
I think that would be the simplest thing.
You can do it, yeah.
Yeah, so if I made a substitute motion, I would be happy to withdraw that if Mr. Watson would like to withdraw his original motion.
I meant to withdraw the whole...
Just table the, whatever it means.
We could do that too.
So I'll withdraw the original motion and bring it back next month. Perfect.
Second.
Okay. Mr. McMillan, did you?
Well, I guess if we're going to do away with it, we can wait until next month. I was going to make just a, a simple motion to do what we had talked about, Monday night versus Wednesday night, and do away with all this. No, I did not. I wasn't interested in, in the, the written aspect of it. But obviously I made it too simple or I was going to make it too simple. I'll just pass.
Ms. Horn.
So I would just like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Law Director?
So, at this point, there's no motion for this policy. So if this board just, just proceeds on, then this policy has no changes for this month.
I guess I'm confused. Are we, at this point, are we giving you instruction to come back with new wording next month for this?
I mean...
I thought that's what we all wanted.
No, no.
Or a lot of us seem to want.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. I mean, so what, so, so what I'll tell you, what, what my office will do is, is we will bring some wording to change this policy for next month because that's what's been expressed. But at this time, there's no motion to do anything with this policy for this month.
So would we need to make a motion to defer consideration until May?
No, you don't have to because, because what I can tell you, what I will do is I will, I will bring some rewording of this policy for next month.
And then we'll just put it back on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Cottney.
Item 7B, approve first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy B-111, duties of officers.
Move to approve.
We need to not do this one because those two go together. So we need to put this one next month too.
Item 7C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-120, board member development as amended.
So motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-160, school board meetings as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approve first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy B-161, notification of meetings.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-162, agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-164, voting method as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7H, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C-231, surveillance, photograph, video retention and viewing as amended.
Motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7I, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-260, grants management as amended.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7J, approve first reading of proposed new Knox County Board of Education Policy C-260, equity in education.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Mr. Watson. Ms. Satterfield, do we have public forum?
Yes, we have Courtney Dorrett for public forum. You have three minutes. Please state your name, county, residence, and you have three minutes to speak. Commissioner Courtney Dorrett, apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members for allowing me to speak. I am here today not only as the representative for District Two residents, but also as a former high school teacher and a parent. I'm here today to discuss equity. While the immediate response to the word invoke, seems to invoke racial connotations, equity is actually something much more than just race. My daughter was diagnosed with type one diabetes on September 23rd, 2020. She attends a small Knox County elementary school with a population of only 350 students. However, of those 350 students, two of them are type one diabetic or what is considered insulin dependent. Because of our low school population, our nurse must split her time at our school with another elementary school about 15 minutes away. We had an issue just this morning with my daughter's blood sugar being high and I needed the nurse to check it. However, the nurse was not scheduled to be at our school until after lunch. There have been other occasions where her blood sugar has dropped dangerously low and the nurse was at her other assigned school. In this situation, the time it takes for the nurse at the nearby middle school to get to my daughter can literally mean life and death. My child's needs are not being met. How many students' needs are not being met because we look at equity with an incredibly narrow focus? This is equity or lack thereof. This is my daughter's identity. This is where we, as a school system, must do better to meet the needs of all children. Yes, equity can deal with race, but we have to get away from the idea that equity is only dealing with race. Passing this equity policy is just one step this body can take to ensure that students' identities will not pre, excuse me, identities will not predict or predetermine their success in our school district, that the necessary resources are allocated to ensure that every student receives what they need to succeed. Thank you for your consideration of my child and the other 59,999 students in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the public forum.
So we have a motion by Ms. Satterfield and a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My points won't be long. We've talked about this policy since January now. I, I just wanted to make a comment related to Ms. Owen's thoughts on Monday about the proposed equity policy. At that time, Ms. Owen referenced the, some relationships possibly involved with the Tennessee Leaders for Equity playbook. I, I think I'm going to use a phrase that my pastor uses all the time, that this is not about that. This, this policy on face value has nothing to do with the privatization of schools. I went back and listened to the list again that Ms. Owen referenced and none of those institutions or individuals are referenced in the acknowledgements of the Tennessee Leaders for playbook. And I think the only specific language in this policy from that actual playbook is those seven commitments to, to equity. So I, I, I know that there's people have varying different reasons for supporting or not supporting the policy, but I would hope that when we have policies like this and other things, that we can take them at face value and look at them for what they're trying to do and be about. And, and I would also ask that when we, when we vote for this tonight, that we do a roll call vote. And if you would afford me the opportunity, I'd love to hear the, the reason why each person is not voting, mainly because I think it's important for the Alliance for Educational Equity and those stakeholders who are involved in this work for Knox County Schools, to be, to be able to get a sense from the board as individuals about where the challenges are. So that way, as that groups move for, that group moves forward and also the central office, that we can be better attuned to the concerns of the board. So, thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roll call vote will be fine, but I object to Mr. Watson trying to require each board member to state why they're voting for or against. I don't think that, that we should take, take up that time, and I don't really think he has that right.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McMillan, I wasn't requiring. I, I said if you would do me the courtesy, and if you don't want to, that's completely fine. I'm certainly not going to make demands of either one, any of you as individuals. So, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Satterfield and a second by Mr. Watson. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Cottney, do you want to do a roll call vote? Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
I'll pass.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
Ms. Bounds?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
No.
Ms. Bab, did you want to change your pass vote? You're changing it to no or you don't want to change it?
Yes, that, that happened once before.
I'm going to pass and I, I will give an explanation of, I feel like we talked about this a lot in policy review, and part of the discussion was feeling the need that we needed to discuss parts of this. And so I think, you know, that was one thing we did was talk about, and I think we've already scheduled a discussion of a lot of the metrics and things like that. So that's my reason for passing at this point.
So, Madam Chair, that vote was two yes votes, six no votes and one pass.
So as we continue to move over, move forward and talk about these issues, I would like this board to be...
this board to be reminded that there's communities that's been waiting on this school system to do something about these issues. So take all the time you need to talk, but there's people waiting for us to act. And so whenever you're ready, just let us know, okay?
So that motion fails. Ms. Cotney?
Item 8A, approve receipt of Fiscal Year 2022 Department of Education Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Corpse Grant in the amount of $1,291,500.
A motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approve receipt of Tennessee Department of Education Additional Targeted Support and Improvement Grant in the amount of $225,000 for Maynard Elementary School, Northwest Middle School, and Vine Middle Magnet School.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve receipt of Tennessee Department of Education School Bus Restraint Grant in the amount of $10,000 to be used for contractor reimbursements.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve receipt of East Tennessee Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Dingly and Rosenweig Charitable Fund for the Pond Gap Elementary School to be used for books for pre-K through second grade students.
Motion by Ms. Fab, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve contract with Digital Group LLC for cable networking installation services up to $500,000 annually for the term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Fab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve contract with CDW Government LLC for provision of interactive display panels at an estimated cost of $14,160,000 to support ESER 3.0 Priority IV for the term of May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2024, which may be extended for three additional years.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Ms. Fab?
I just have a question about the three additional years. Since it's ESER funds that are being used, what does the three additional years mean?
That's kind of Freddy's.
So that would just get us all the way through the available term if we need that amount of time to install. So that gets us beyond our due date, so to speak.
Any more discussion? So we have a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9C, approve contract with All Occasions Party Rentals for Stage Rentals for Graduation Ceremonies up to $40,000 annually for the term of April 1, 2022 through May 31, 2023, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve contract with Joseph Construction Company for the West High School Softball Complex Project in the amount of $4,081,611.
Motion by Ms. Fab, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, authorize the Knox County Law Department to hire Attorney D. Scott Bennett to advise and assist with all matters regarding the mask mandate litigation.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Fab, a second by Ms. Satterfield, and I believe we have public forum, Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, we have two for public forum. First, we have Caitlin Jones. If you state your name, county, residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Caitlin Jones, and I'm from Knox County. Since the beginning of this court order mask mandate, parents, students, and the communities have been told by the law department that they are doing everything they could do to get masks out of our school. Some of you have even defended the law department and their extreme incompetence in this case, and said that there was no need for outside attorney. The last time I spoke in front of this board, I told you all that it was a safety risk for Alex teachers wearing a mask. I told you the consequences we were seeing, such as Alex's lack of education and the black eye he got at school. I asked the IETP team for his teachers to wear clear face shields, and they denied it. I followed the steps as I was advised by the Special Education Director and was given more hoops to jump through, and once again, no remedy. I took my case before a judge where Amanda Morse, who was appointed to the case by Law Director Buick, fought against me tooth and nail to keep Alex teachers in masks. It's on court record. Once I told her I would not be signing the proposal spoken about in the mediation session, she immediately filed a motion to dismiss on a technicality. My first issue here is there was clearly a conflict of interest on her behalf as I worked with her at the beginning of this mandate to file a deposition in the school's favor. Secondly, how could the same attorney claim to not want our kids in masks while arguing in another case for the teachers to be wearing a mask? If there is one thing that is clear, the attorneys in the law director's office and Mr. Buick himself are not arguing the case for our children and parents and staff, but instead for the school. The school administration's arguments were that Alec listened to the teachers' directions 50% of the time if they pulled their mask down, so Alec can see their face. Let me be very clear. It only takes one time for him not to listen, and Alec could be seriously injured or dead. They argued that Alec was in the least restrictive environment when his teachers pulled the mask down. But according to Alex's doctors, which I have a note, and according to history, that's not true. The black eye. I understand we are currently not in masks, but there may very well come a time when we are back in masks, which is why I'm being a voice for Alec. I know some of you do not want our children in masks, but let's face it, the law director's office has proven they only care about protecting the school system and not the children. When I had to sit and listen to the attorney supposedly fighting for our kids to keep masks off, fight to keep masks on teachers, I lost all faith in the law department and the attorneys who represent it. Later, you-- or earlier, I guess, you discussed an equity policy that has somehow gotten worse than the first one proposed. At least the first one attempted to hide the true intent behind it by adding children with disabilities. This new policy does not have anything but one word, talking about children with disabilities. Let's just call it as it is, and it's pandering to one side of the political aisle, all while the attorneys in this school district are fighting to discriminate against our kids in court. This horrendous act shows that we need outside counsel to represent our kids and to not protect the school system. Because of this, I urge you to hire outside counsel immediately. Thank you.
Next, we have Randy Jones. Randy Jones?
She's not here.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Ms. Fab?
Yes, I have a question. I don't know if this is for Mr. Dubler or someone else, but how many people were considered when we decided to go with this person? Is this a question for you or for someone else?
I would say it's for me. You know, let me just-- I can't really address the speaker much, but I can say that our office disagrees with the assertions of the speaker. The Knox County school system and the law department cannot discuss any details due to state and federal privacy law, but the law department has fought against mask mandates and will continue to do so, period. As far as attorneys considered, our office considered, you know, various attorneys across the state. A lot of the attorneys this board would likely be familiar with due to connections with TSBA, as they are, you know, speakers that frequently present, which Scott Bennett is one of those.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions for Mr. Dubler. First, just for the public, could you clarify what this attorney's role would be?
So pursuant to the board's own motion, this attorney's role would be to advise the law department in a consultive role. And so with that role, we would certainly bring this attorney in, whether it's Scott Bennett or another, but I mean, obviously Scott Bennett would be a great choice should the board choose to choose him. But he would be brought in, be brought up to speed, and then would obviously be consulted when any type of significant decisions would be made in the case.
So he would not be litigating in place of the attorneys we have now?
No, no, he would not be able to appear in court on behalf of the board. That would be our role, but I mean, certainly, like I say, he would be consulted.
Thank you. And my second question, could you speak to the potential cost that we might be looking at?
It would be a guesstimate. You know, obviously, it's going to take some money, some time and money for him to get up to speed, so to speak. But then, of course, it depends upon how much activity there is in the case from now until conclusion, whether or not this thing goes all the way to trial. Obviously, there's mediation pending soon. So, you know, I would say, you know, a minimum between $10,000 and $20,000, and then just could go up considerably from there, just depending upon the time involved and the amount, the length of time of the case.
Thank you. So looking at his rate, if he were to work full-time for two weeks, we would be looking at a significant amount of money. So between that bottom estimate and, say, a two-week estimate, we're looking at anywhere between the cost of a teaching assistant and the cost of a teacher. And I think this board really needs to think about whether that is a reasonable cost for litigation that is concluding, really.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to have to vote no on this, just because I would like to see other candidates brought to us. I know-- Well, you know, one of the-- so they list significant special education and disability cases, which Mr. Bennett has handled in federal court, which nothing against Mr. Bennett, I'm sure he's a great person, but in LH versus Hamilton County Schools, he did lose that case for the county against the same lawyers who are suing us. So to put a losing case as one of his, I don't know, on his resume to us just is a little discerning to me. So that's why I'm going to have to vote no on this, and I would like to see other candidates brought to us. I would like to see an attorney who wins 88 cases and at the appeals level. We're losing on our own, so I don't think we need to add somebody who's losing to the same lawyers that we're losing to. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, just a point of clarification for the public. Tonight's vote, and I can be correct if I'm wrong, tonight's vote is not whether or not we are authorizing the law department to hire a attorney. That vote's already been made. The board voted to approve the hiring of an outside counsel. So this vote is simply about who to hire. And at this point, to Ms. Henderson's point, this is the only candidate that's been brought to us. Is that correct? That's actually what we're voting on, correct? It's not authorizing hiring of a attorney, it's this attorney, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so just want to make sure that people understand that, that that vote's already been made in a prior meeting. And then I know this attorney's rate is listed in the literature of $350 an hour. I know that, I believe, Director Buick made comment to a range he felt like between $200 to $400 an hour is probably where we would probably be. Mr. Dubler, because I do think cost is a consideration for some folks when they're thinking about this, even from a public standpoint. Did you see a lot of range in other potential folks that you looked at, or is that about where it's at? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
I think that's a proper range.
Yeah. Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this type of work, I think you're going to be hard-pressed to find anybody at $200 an hour. I mean, you know, it's going to be in that upper part of the range.
Right, and then just another point of clarification. So you mentioned the conclusion of the case, which at this point, we don't know when that will be regardless of what happens with the vote tonight. Is the potential contract with this attorney or any other, or retainer, with any other attorney through now to the time of the conclusion of the case? And how is that defined? When is this case actually concluded? I know there's possible, different possible conclusions, but I guess what I'm asking is, I think it's important for the public to know, when would we not be hiring this person? When would this person not be on retainer anymore? When does it end? Does that make sense?
Sure. The normal conclusion of a case filed in the trial court would either be a trial ending the case or some type of resolution, such as a settlement. After that, you're looking at an appeal, and normally, when you retain an attorney, it's just for the trial. It would be something separate for the appeal.
Okay, and so this attorney, right now, the agreement that's being considered would keep this person on retainer for this case through conclusion? Or is this simply we're paying for, is there no real retainer, and are we just paying for actual time?
It's, well, it's just time.
Right.
Yeah, you start, I mean, a retainer can be something completely different. I mean, a lot of times in retaining an attorney, you pay that attorney a fee so that you can just call up whenever you'd like and, you know, things like that. But this is just, he will, any attorney at this point, what we would be asking is just bill for your time.
The reason I'm asking this question is I think it's important for the public to know that this person would only get paid for actual time billed. That even if, let's say, all their time is upfront loaded right now in the next two weeks, and they don't do anything for a month, they're not getting continually paid for that time, they're not doing anything. And I think that's important to note in terms of the agreement and how it's set up. So, thank you.
Ms. Fab?
Yes, and I don't know how the vote would go on Mr. Bennett, but if it does not go for Mr. Bennett, I would really like for us to, if there is another candidate, to have a special called meeting to move forward with this, because we got this a while ago about him, and I actually had expected us to go ahead and have a meeting to do it, because what we're having is it's getting very drawn out. So I would hope if this person is not selected and there's another person to come before us, that we can work a little bit more timely than waiting for monthly meetings on it. And then just as far as the rate, I actually had an attorney I know that approached me just saying they were interested, and I know probably, I think, spoke to the law department because I have no way of hiring them, but they, the rate was basically exactly the same. So I am thinking that that's probably a similar rate.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also spoke with a private attorney who said that this was well within the range. He would say that $300 to $400 would be reasonable. I'd also like to note that it's not just the hourly that we're looking at, we're also looking at any expenses incurred. So any kind of travel, lodging, meals, whatever expenses might be incurred would also be part of it.
Ms. Henderson?
I agree with Ms. Fab. If this motion does fail, I would like to have a meeting to discuss this. And I'd also like to see, you know, a list of candidates and their qualifications, too, so that we have multiple candidates that we can look at as well.
Yeah, I would say that, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Horn, that if we're going to have a special called meeting, we probably need options, or we're just going to, I mean, we can't have a special called meeting after, I mean, you know what I'm saying? That would kind of get us in the weeds and hard to coordinate everyone's schedule. So we probably would maybe need more than one, just to avoid having multiple special called meetings if the same thing happened, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question goes back to timing. So would, if we chose to approve this this evening, would this attorney be assisting in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals process? Because the way I understand that, since the paperwork has been filed, it can't be amended at this point. Is that correct? And would this person be assisting in that process?
It's a good question, Ms. Horn. So, and you raise a good point, which would be, I mean, you know, at this point in the process, the only thing remaining in the current Sixth Circuit appeal, which is just on the preliminary injunction, is the oral argument. So whoever is hired, assuming they're hired before oral argument, which I believe is May 4th, if I'm not mistaken, then, you know, if they're hired before that, then we would do everything we could to involve that person and get advice, you know, before the oral argument. And then the mediation, like I say, is the other pending event, so same thing, but, you know, we're trying to schedule that mediation in the near future. we're trying to schedule that mediation in the near future, and, uh, you, this would be assuming that whoever is hired is hired before that mediation.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna, uh, speak to process a little bit in terms of how Mr. Bennett came before us. Um, I'm trying to reflect back on the prior meetings that we had. My, my understanding is that, um, the Board in its vote gave the authority to the Law Director to hire outside counsel to advise on the case, but it is the Law Director's, um, it's their sole responsibility to make that hire, but the Board has asked for us to approve any potential recommended hire, is that correct? So, and the reason I'm asking that question is, I understand the desire to look at multiple candidates, but we're not at, I don't know that we actually have that authority to like pick and choose. I think, and if Mr. Buick was here, I would ask him the question, but I don't know that, and I'm not asking you for speak, to speak for Director Buick, but, um, you know, we're, we're kinda making an assumption possibly that he's willing to bring us multiple candidates at one time and have an open conversation about it, which I just think from a process standpoint, I don't know that that's what we agreed to. What we agreed to was Director Buick coming up with the candidate he wanted and saying, "Do you want them or not?" I think that's kinda where we're at, and Mr. Dupler, if you haven't even liked to shine on that, that would be great.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Watson. I, I mean, I think that's the essence of it. Uh, you, you know, I, I'll be happy to go back to the Law Director and see about, uh, uh, bringing multiple potential candidates. But, but, but I do believe you're correct on to, on the process. I mean, you know, that would be, you, you know, we would have to, uh, to, uh, you know, um, contact those, those multiple potential candidates, and, and they would have to agree to be discussed in an open meeting and picked apart on their resume, and you, you know, so I mean, not, not every attorney may be willing to do that, you know, so we would have to get, to get that permission before we do that. But, but if that's what the Board wants us to do, then we will, we will certainly take a look at that and report back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dupler, Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, Mr. Dupler, just more of a legal process question for you. So if we lose at the Sixth Circuit, would we then appeal to the Supreme Court? You can appeal from the Sixth Circuit to the Supreme Court, is that correct?
So what, so what we have right now is a preliminary injunction, um, that was not a, a trial court decision, you know, and that's, and that's, and that's part of what's been so aggravating about this case from the very beginning. They filed for a preliminary injunction, brought in doctors, uh, that, that they had available that we didn't have very early on, just days after the case was filed. So, uh, so, so that, that preliminary injunction was handed down, and we appealed it to the Sixth Circuit as quickly as possible. But, but the answer would be, I mean, if the Sixth Circuit rules against us, and, and again, we're, 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 um, we, we feel good about them ruling for us, but there's no guarantees. And so if it, if it, if it is sent back down to the trial court, then that's what'll happen. It'd be sent back down to the trial court for us to proceed along in the case as one normally does. And there would be what's, what's called discovery and, 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 you know, on both sides, trying to find out more information in preparation for a trial. I mean, you know, could the case eventually go up to the Supreme Courts? The, the answer is yes, but that would, but that would be after a trial.
Okay, do you think your office currently can handle all of that, like a trial and a possible going to the Supreme Court level? What?
I mean, I think what he's saying is, we don't simultaneously, if, if I'm understanding you correct.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
We're not gonna go to the Supreme Court till after we go to trial, like there's not, so there's not, there's not joint things going on.
Right, but is the office capable of handling both of those things, do you think?
Certainly, I mean, I mean, we have, we have attorneys licensed in, in, in the, in the Eastern District, the Sixth Circuit, and the U.S. Supreme Court.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, by Ms. Bab and a second by Ms. Satterfield. So do we wanna do a roll call vote?
Ms. Satterfield?
Pass.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson? Ms. Bound?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Christie? Ms. Satterfield, would you like to change your pass vote?
What's the number?
It is, five, there's five yes votes and two no votes. And Ms. Owen, would you like to change your pass? Okay, that's five yes votes, two no votes, and two pass votes.
So motion carries.
Item 10B, approve a school construction budget line item transfer in the amount of $2 million from land acquisition account to Title IX account for the West High School softball project.
Motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C, approve tenure for eligible teachers.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for those in the public who, um, are not intimately involved in the education system and may be a part of industry, other industries, I think tenure can be an interesting concept. And so, Mr. McPherson, would you speak to tenure and its purpose, and, and why are we approving a list like this tonight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Watson, thank you. Uh, tenure is a way of, of rewarding and recognizing teachers who have been with us for the past, for at least five years. And also, it would, they would be required, uh, it would be for those who have achieved a level of overall effectiveness score of at least four or five, so these are our, our, our highest performers.
Would you say it's fair, would it be fair to say that we don't just hand out tenure?
Oh, that's fair, go ahead.
Thank you, I, I just wanna, I wanna give that credit where it's due.
Yes.
And also make sure that people understand that, what it's for and, and why we do it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Watson, for bringing that up. I think it's also important to note that tenure does not give teachers some kind of grand guarantee of employment. It gives them due process, and that's really all it gives is due process, thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, approve contract of employment with Dr. John Ryswick as Director of Knox County Schools.
Motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was some discussion at the work session, and there's, uh, some slight modificate, modified language. Mr. Dupler, would you mind just reading the modifications, just so the way the public knows the changes? And then also, if you wouldn't mind, also speaking to, um, the two or three, um, major changes in this contract versus other contracts, just so the public's aware of kinda the different points that, that were negotiated, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Watson. So, so first, you wanted me to talk about where, where you had asked for the change in Section 7, is that what you were saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, I talked to Dr. Ryswick, and, uh, we talked about, uh, making that slight change just to make it clear what, what the contract's saying. So what it, so what it's saying now is that, um, each year in October, uh, or by October, the, the Director and the Board will develop an annual action plan of, of 10 to 15 objectives. And that's what he was talking about on Monday night, you know, being able to be nimble and being able to, to look at, at, uh, what might be more of a hot-button topic for that year, uh, as opposed to just sticking with the same strategic plan. And then, and then, and what that'll do then is that will then complement and perhaps amend the current strategic plan that the Board and the Director has as far as a multi-year, usually, what, four or five years? So, so, so that's the intent of that, um, section of the contract, and that's been, um, modified to make that more clear. Okay, and then, and then, Mr. Watson, you were also asking about some of the, uh, some of the m- major changes to this, to this contract versus the one that was originally presented to the Board, um, as a, as more of a form. And, uh, you all talked about on Monday night as far as the compensation. Dr. Ryswick wants to go with the 240 instead of the 250, and then, and then a $10,000, uh, performance bonus. And then, I'm, I'm just flipping through here, uh, Section 7 and Section 8, which you all also talked about on Monday night, those were new features to the contract. I think the other, uh, probably major new feature, um, other than what's already been discussed, is, um, the tenure and transfer section in Mr. Thomas's contract. I mean, you know, he, he, he has tenure and wanted to keep that tenure. Uh, Dr. Ryswick's saying that, um, that he's not interested in tenure, uh, that, that, that he, he would rather, you know, stay in the Director's position instead of going to any other position with KCS. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I think that's correct, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, he's nodding, yes, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a lot of conversation about dates on Monday night, and so in, um, thinking through just the calendar, our discussion on Monday night, Mr. McMillan suggested getting through graduations, which I spoke with Danny Trent, and graduations end on June 3rd. So I, I think maybe it would split the difference if we go with Mr. McMillan's suggestion and maybe, um, at that, for June, have a start date of June 6th and move Mr. Thomas into a consultant role at that point so that it would move the timeline up by a month from what's on the contract. So I'm not making a motion at this point, but I would like to offer that as a point of discussion.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm not speaking to that, I'm looking at a, a previous item. Looking at number six, and I'm not suggesting that we add this in the contract at all, but I would ask that whomever may be Chair at the time in the Law Department and Dr. Ryswick, be sure that the Research Office and Mr. Rutter are involved in making sure that those performance objectives are reasonable.
Ms. Bab?
And I did watch Monday's meeting, so I followed the whole discussion, and I actually think, for the purposes that I think everybody's talking about, I feel like June is too late. I feel like so much of what we're really discussing is the decisions that take place in May. I mean, so many of the principal positions, um, I, for the most part, do it. But, listening to discussion, I very much do think, um, Mr. Thomas needs to be at the graduation ceremonies as the representative of being the superintendent for all these kids that are graduating. I mean, I think you symbolically are the leader of the school for those kids graduating. So, I don't know how, I, I like, I like the date being May 1st personally. But in, with that being, you know, that, we know Mr. Thomas is staying on, we want him to stay on an advisory role, and I think he very much needs to act it, personally, I want him to be very, be very actively involved with the graduation, because I think symbolically, he is the leader for those kids that are graduating. So I would prefer the May 1st date over the June date.
Mr. McMillan?
I was, I was just gonna speak on what, uh, in reference to what, uh, Ms. Horn said. And, uh, I think some type of, of compromise might be workable here, something that we could all buy into. And, uh, I said the other night that I thought they worked well together. Mr. Thomas said that, I believe, and you, you correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but did you not say that it was gonna be John's decisions? And you thought that he should, you know, that, even if you maintained the role, you would not object to anything that he was wanting to do prior to you leaving officially?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, having said that, um, when's the last high school graduation?
June 3rd.
June 3rd?
And so Monday's June 6th, that's a Friday, and Monday's June 6th.
What, uh, how many are there, or is there one, uh, June 2nd?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I, I'm sure Ms. Kelly knows. I see her, I see her opening her notebook.
I'll tell you, June 2nd. Hall High School at 9:00 AM and Gibbs High School at 6:00 PM on June 2nd.
On June 6th? Okay. And that's the, the last of the high schools?
Is there one on June 3rd also?
There's one on June 3rd, Fulton High School at 9:00 AM, South Door High School at 6:00 PM.
Okay. I guess, uh, having thoroughly discussed this, maybe I, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, that Mr. Thomas remain officially superintendent through the last graduation, which would be June 3rd. And Dr. Ryswick officially, uh, take over his duties on Monday, the June 6th, or whatever that was. Is that, is that?
You know, that's what I was thinking, however, as you're saying that, I'm thinking we don't need a lapse, Mr. Dupler, because we, we would need a superintendent at all times, would we not?
Well, we're not gonna have a lapse.
Well,
We're not gonna have a lapse.
Even the weekend, I mean, the weekend, we would have a lapse, so, I mean, I, this is such a big job.
Okay, well, then we could.
So, but I, that's what I suggested the date, but as I'm.
Then let's make it, uh, June 3rd at, uh,
Midnight.
9:00 PM.
Midnight.
9:00 PM, yeah, midnight, midnight.
You'll get that night off, Bob.
Let's see, uh, while I have the floor, um, Dr. Ryswick, do you, would you object to basically what I'm recommending? Or what are your thoughts on it?
Well, thank you, Mr. McMillan, as long as I don't have to be up at midnight, I'm okay. No, I think, I, I just to say, kinda what we said Monday, I mean, you know, Bob and I have gotten along great and, uh, and have a good working relationship, you know, to be able to work, uh, in these things, and, and I think we'll continue to do so. And, and I think, I think, you know, what, what you, uh, what you're recommending, I think, you know, still gives us time to, to do some things as we were thinking through that, you know, I'm, I'm, I have a chief academic officer to hire, you know, 'cause I'm, won't be in that role. So there are some of those kinds of things that still have to be done, and some transitions, and, you know, communicating that, making sure the schools understand, uh, you know, our, our priorities and those things. And, and I do think that's critical, you know, before they leave in May, so we, you know, we can start having those discussions, you know, prior to, but I think, um, I think, you know, Mr. Thomas and I, uh, could probably pull that off and, and be fine. We've been fine the whole time, so.
I, 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 I feel like I know you, both of you fairly well, uh, and I, I think you, you, you could, you seem to work together really well. Having said that, uh, this would not, I'm assuming, would not hinder something if you wanted to do something with, uh, certain group, certain principal, uh, you know, I, I'm talking about for a given school, you know, you could, you could have that individual discussion as, early as, you know, first week in May, could you not?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, uh, I mean, typically, that is the, the timeframe when we're doing that, 'cause again, it's important for, it's important for schools and teachers to understand, you know, if there are changes in leadership or changes in, in those kinds of things in their school, and, and typically, we try to have that done before they go, uh, to break. So, uh, you know, I, I would anticipate that again, you know, with Mr. Thomas's, uh, support, uh, happening, you know, prior to that. So, you know, I would anticipate that, again, you know, with Mr. Thomas's support happening, you know, prior to that.
Well, that, that was kind of what I was, was getting at. You all could go ahead and, and, and give the expectations for what a given school was or a, a particular group or whatever. And everybody that you're dealing with is going to know what the situation is. But that allows Mr. Thomas to efficiently be that. And, and then, you know, of course, I guess salary-wise, you would start whenever the, at midnight on whatever the, whatever the date was. Okay. I'll propose that if anybody is interested in seconding it.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. McMillan to have the start date on June 3rd at midnight? Or would that be June 4th?
It would be 11:59 on June 3rd or midnight on the 4th.
11:59 on...
It's like your New Year's.
11:59 on June 3rd, and at that time, Mr. Thomas would move into an advisory or consultant role until, um, June 30th? And Ms. Bounds, you have seconded that, right? Okay. So, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. One from Mr. McPherson. From an HR perspective, does it help to start at 12:00 a.m. on the 4th? Like, that one minute of pay on the day before? I don't know if that helps or not. I know he's not getting paid daily, but I don't, I don't know if that makes it cleaner.
Well, I mean, normally, in like an employment contract, we would just, 12 o'clock or 12:01 would be assumed as the day is named. So it would be, like, June 4th, you know, then automatically at 12:01 or 12:00 midnight, June 4th.
Yeah, so from a technical standpoint, maybe that's the way to do that. And then my second question is for Mr. Dupler. So I'm, I agree and supportive of, of starting the switch earlier. But from a technical standpoint, you know, the, the board only has authority to hire the superintendent. So if we're suggesting now that we would like to see Mr. Thomas move into a paid-to-see-out-as-contract advisory or consultant role, what, if any, action does this board need to take to do that? Or is that really us entrusting Dr. Ryswick when he takes that position to do that, to move him into that role? So there's some moving parts here that I think we need to understand the implications of it. And are there multiple actions we need to be taking to accomplish it versus just a start date of a contract for superintendent, which I think might leave Mr. Thomas, or Superintendent Thomas officially hanging unless we take official action?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Watson. So I, and maybe I was zoning out, but I mean, I don't know if Mr. McMillan presented a substitute motion or not, but I mean, that motion would have to be a substitute motion. But, but, but such a motion, as I heard it, was proposed, would also take care of Mr. Thomas's contract, which, which, if you're accelerating Dr. Ryswick's contract, I mean, I mean, that's going to necessarily affect Mr. Thomas's contract. And, you know, if this board says move him into a consultative role, then certainly, certainly the two of them can, you know, can work that out as far as Dr. Ryswick would then have the, you know, the ultimate authority to, to work that out to, to, on details as to exactly what that looks like. But, I mean, the board would be, would be keeping Mr. Thomas at his, at his same rate of pay for that position and would keep him on until the end of his contract, which is June 30th.
Sure, thank you. I just want to be real clear about who needs to be doing what through that process, that we're really in some ways entrusting Dr. Ryswick and Superintendent Thomas to work out the details of that in that capacity.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, Ms. Bab, since you watched the meeting on Monday, you know I was very concerned about the May 1st date because I definitely want to be sure that Dr. Ryswick has time to get people in positions and, and do all those things that are normally done in May. So I still have that concern, even though I'm fine with this compromise, I still have that concern. And so, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, if, if Mr. Thomas is agreeable to work with Dr. Ryswick and, and kind of let him go forward with what plans need to be made, then, you know, I'm definitely comfortable with this. So, and I believe you, you've stated that a couple of times. So, so, so I feel like this will be a good kind of compromise, and, and certainly, we do want to honor Mr. Thomas's commitment to our school system for all these years. So, so I hope that this shows that, that we want to do that also.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, for the law director, did I understand you correctly that my motion needed to be a substitute motion? Okay, then I will formally change what I said to a substitute. And I assume Ms. Bounds will... She said. Thank you.
Okay, so any more discussion? And I, I will be supportive of that as well because I think we do need to be mindful that we do not have a chief academic officer. So it, it would not be fair to have you do both jobs. I, I'm assuming that one's a big job, too. So I, I would be supportive of that. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one final comment, and I mentioned this to Superintendent Thomas shortly after his announcement. I, I know that your heart is to finish strong. And I think this allows you to do that with this current class and those students that you've been walking alongside and those educators. So I appreciate your intent on wanting to finish strong and not just kind of chill out for six months. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so Ms. Cottney, will you read that substitute motion?
I'll do my best. Thank you, Madam Chair. The mo, the substitute motion by Mr. McMillan is for Bob Thomas to remain as superintendent through the last high school graduation on June 3rd, and for Dr. John Ryswick to officially start as superintendent on June 4th at 12:01 a.m.
Okay, and we had a second by Ms. Bounds, so do we want to do a roll call? Ms. Satterfield?
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification, because I thought I heard Mr. Dupler say this. Is there anything that we need in that substitute motion to address the intent of Mr. Thomas staying on in an advisory capacity or not? I just want to make sure that I'm... Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to just, so, I mean, the two contracts, you know, just complement each other, really. So, I mean, I mean, once you, once you vote that, that, if you vote that Dr. Ryswick starts on June 4th, then, then, then at that time, Mr. Thomas would move into a consultative role because...
It doesn't...
Correct, because there's a term in Mr. Thomas's contract that would require that. Yeah.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe we also have a policy that this would fall under that allows the superintendent to organize the central office.
Ms. Cottney?
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
No.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's eight yes votes and one no vote. Okay, so motion carries.
And item 10E, approve resolution to increase Title IX management and address claims.
A motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one person signed up for public forum. Kimberly Parks. State your name, county, and residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm really short. Kimberly Parks, Knox County, District 5. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for finally affording me the opportunity to speak about the ethics complaint that I had filed last month. Since the opportunity wasn't afforded to me then, I'm going to speak about it now. I have this uncanny ability and resourcefulness to find information. I have been able to uncover this board's members' posts on social media and websites that were hidden and deleted with such thinking that they would not be found. The Supreme Court in the 4th District has ruled that social media is a public forum for public officials, including Board, Board of Education members. Having an official page and a private profile does not necessarily safeguard you from these rulings, especially in regard to the, to the capacity in which you use them in. In this folder is screenshots, screen prints of the misconduct for the ethics complaint I was, that I filed against Ms. Owens. This is not a complete file. In here, you will see proof that her personal Facebook page has been used in an official capacity. You will find proof of malicious misconduct within a certain Facebook group. You will find that she has deleted content off her profiles, off her groups, and her website. On February 22nd, after she was called out at a meeting by a parent at the Knox County Commission meeting, she began scrubbing her website, her Facebook pages, her, her profile, her groups, of all the content that goes against her. And as of today, it has since been cleared off of her official website, the web catch, of all of the 2022 content that was created. She not only did this, but she has violated the parents and the fellow board members' First Amendment rights by doing this. It was found in case law Davison versus Randall, 2019, that using a personal profile in official capacity, that it violates the First Amendment rights of the citizens if their comments are deleted. Due to time constraints, I cannot get into every detail that is contained in this folder. I will say that she has abused the power of her position and has demonstrated as such. I come before the board today to demand that she not just recuse herself, but I demand that she resigns. If not, this would be a very public and embarrassing legal scandal on her behalf. Thank you.
Since I was personally brought into this, I would like to address those issues. My website, OwenForSchools.com, has never had any content in 2022. The last post is 2021. I would also be very glad to bring any judge who would like to see it, all of the history from that site. The First Amendment guarantees my right as an individual to say whatever I like. And there is nothing that I have said anywhere that in any way goes against anything that it is my duty to do as a board member. If you would like to take me to court, bring it.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Meeting adjourned.